Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I want to welcome everyone back for what promises to be a busy and challenging, exciting academic year. I'd like to announce that we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters at the end of the first segment of our public meeting and that the Board will reconvene in public session after the executive session. I'm not going to read the notice about disruption to you as I have been doing because we posted it on the website and communicated it in that fashion. I'd like to ask that everyone take a moment to turn off cell phones or other noise makers. CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public session of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of the Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours on the CUNY website. On behalf of the Board and Chancellor Goldstein, I would like to issue a very warm welcome to President Karen Gould of Brooklyn College, President Felix Matos Rodriguez of Ostos Community College, President William Pollard of Medgar Evers, and interim President Stan Altman of Baruch College. Congratulations to all and welcome to the CUNY family. I would like to congratulate Trustee Rita DiMartino, who was appointed by Governor Patterson to the Commission on National and Community Service, the Board responsible for promoting and implementing volunteer and community service programs across New York State. Trustee DiMartino was also recently honored with a Lifetime Achievement Award by the New York League of Puerto Rican Women at their college awards and special presentation ceremony. Congratulations to you, Trustee DiMartino.
Thank you.
And congratulations are in order to our good friend, Dr. Gregory Williams, on his appointment as President of the University of Cincinnati. This is a very fine university. I know it well with a very important mission for its city and the Midwest and the country. And Greg, we're sorry to see you go, but we sure wish you well in all your endeavors in the future. You leave a very large community of friends here at CUNY. I'd like to call on Trustee Charles Shorter to introduce a special resolution of appreciation.
On behalf -- I'm losing my voice, but on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I would like to read this resolution of appreciation to President Gregory Williams. And I'm smiling with as much excitement as he's probably feeling. Whereas Dr. Gregory Williams has served as the 11th President of the City College of New York since his appointment by the Board of Trustees in 2001, and whereas President Williams led the first Capitol campaign in the college's history, which has already raised over $300 million to advance the goals and missions of the college, including a major gift for the Andrew Grove School of Engineering, and whereas, under his leadership and with the support of CUNY, the state of New York has invested nearly $1 billion in new science facilities, as well as a new home for the CCNY School of Architecture, which has been named the Bernard and Ann Spitzer School of Architecture, and whereas, Dr. Williams implemented a successful strategic plan that included the rejuvenation of the core curriculum, the hiring of significant numbers of new faculty, and increasing enrollment by nearly 50 percent, including an increase in new freshmen under new, more rigorous admission standards, and the college now boasts a student body of over 15,000 in faculty and students who have received prestigious national honors for their achievements. And whereas, under Dr. Williams's leadership, the City College has received increased national recognition and is in the top tier among its peer institutions, ranked on such factors as academic reputation, faculty, and student diversity, and now resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Gregory Williams for his exemplary dedication and distinguished service to both the City College and the City University of New York.
I'd like to second. Motion is carried by acclamation. May I call on the Chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gregory, I will never forget that day when I got on a plane and flew to Columbus, Ohio to take you to lunch. I was there to convince you to seriously think about being the next president of City College. And I remember also, as I got off the plane looking for a restaurant, you stood waiting for me with a brown paper bag. And in that brown paper bag was a tuna fish sandwich, a chicken salad sandwich, and I believe an egg salad sandwich, a couple of apples, and I think a bag of Fritos or something like that. And I was really very impressed with that. If you were going to be the president, you would be a good steward over the finances of the university. Since that day, our friendship has grown. You've done a wonderful job at the City College of New York. Never in my dreams would I have felt that I was going to see you in Ohio and then waving bon voyage back to Ohio, but our friendship and the work that you've done for my alma mater and so many others is greatly appreciated. You've left an indelible mark on this great institution, and whoever the next president is will build on the great successes you've had. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is a great time for me, but one filled with mixed emotions because I have made, Sarah and I have made so many great friends here in New York over the last eight years and had the support of so many people. I get credit for a lot of successes at City College, but I could not do that by myself. I could only do that because the students, the faculty, the staff, alumni are with me. And I want to thank particularly Chancellor Goldstein and everyone at 80th Street for their help and assistance, and Chairman Benno Schmidt and the members of the Board of Trustees for all the help and assistance you've given me. Sarah and I feel that this is really one of the great experiences of our life and something that we will take in our heart wherever we go. And even though we're going back to Ohio, a place that we continue to love and looking forward to the challenges at the University of Cincinnati, City College of New York, and the City University of New York will continue to remain very important places in our heart. Thank you very much.
In consultation with the Chancellor, I have appointed the following trustees who have kindly agreed to serve on the search committee for a new president of City College. I'm grateful to Trustee Charles Shorter for agreeing to chair this important committee, and to trustees Valerie Beal, Frida Foster Tolbert, Wellington Chen, Carol Robles Roman, and Sam Sutton, who will also serve on the committee. President William Kelly will be the presidential representative on the committee, and faculty, students, and alumni members of the committee will be selected presently pursuant to the university's guidelines. So, thank you to everyone who will serve on this very important committee. I'd like to call now on Trustee Rita DiMartino to introduce a resolution.
Thank you. Resolution of appreciation Kathleen Waldron. Whereas, Dr. Kathleen Waldron was named President of Baruch College in 2004 by the Board of Trustees, and whereas, Dr. Waldron began her tenure by announcing $53 million in gifts to the college, including significant gifts to support the vertical campus, now the William and Anita Newman Vertical Campus and 17 Lexington Avenue, now called the Lawrence and Eris Field Building, and whereas, Dr. Waldron led the adoption of a five-year strategic plan for the college to achieve international prominence, build exceptional academic programs, strengthen the quality of life for students, and increase the college's endowment, and whereas, Dr. Waldron oversaw a college community that was nationally recognized from faculty teaching and scholarship commendations to student academic awards and honors, and whereas, during Dr. Waldron's tenure, Baruch College continued to retain its ranking as one of the best colleges nationwide for ethnic diversity of the student body from America's Best Colleges, published by U.S. News and World Report Magazine, and whereas, Baruch College was recently cited for its outstanding freshman retention rate, 88.5 percent, for the low level of debt incurred by its graduates, and for its high number of international students, and whereas, Dr. Waldron has served as a member of the Presidential Committee on the Fulbright Program and a Director of the Fulbright Association, and is a member of the Financial Women's Association, the Academy of Management, the Economics Club, and the Association for Better New York, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Kathleen Waldron as she continues her service to CUNY as a university professor at the Graduate School and University Center of the City University of New York.
I'd second the resolution. All in favor, please signal by applause. In consultation with Chancellor Goldstein, I have appointed the following trustees who have kindly agreed to serve on the search committee for a new president of Baruch College. Trustee Peter Pantaleo has agreed to chair the committee, and trustees Rita DiMartino, Kathleen M. Facilli, Charles Shorter, and Jeffrey Weisenfeld will serve as additional trustee members. President James Mieskenz will serve as the presidential representative on the committee. Faculty, students, and alumni will be selected presently under the university's guidelines. I'd like now to call on Trustee Frida Foster Tolbert to introduce a special resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The resolution of appreciation for Vice Chancellor Gary Moore reads as follows. Whereas, Dr. Gary Moore joined the City University of New York as Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs in 2006, and whereas, Dr. Moore urged all Student Affairs professionals at the university to aspire to build world-class programs to serve CUNY students, and was a strong and loyal advocate for all of the university's students, and whereas, Dr. Moore was responsible for a wide array of services and programs designed to empower and motivate students as they pursue their academic goals on all CUNY campuses, including athletics, career services, counseling, the CUNY Leadership Academy, Veterans Affairs, advocacy and referral, childcare, international student and scholar services, student health services for students with disabilities, and women's centers, and whereas, Dr. Moore's other CUNY commitments included presiding over the CUNY Residents Development Corporation, chairing the CUNY United Way Campaign, serving as educational chair of the CUNY-wide New York Blood Center Donor Campaign, and participating in the CUNY Campaign Against Diabetes Initiative, all of which he met with dedication and enthusiasm, and whereas, throughout his career, Dr. Moore has devoted himself to ensuring access to quality higher education and healthcare for all citizens, particularly the underrepresented and the underprivileged, and whereas, Dr. Moore has been active in a multitude of service organizations within and outside every institution in which he has served, and Dr. Moore is the recipient of many awards, including East Carolina University's Chancellor Synergy Award and the Black Alumni of the Year Award, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Vice Chancellor Gary Moore for his exemplary dedication and distinguished service to the City University of New York.
I'd like to second that. All in favor, please signal with applause.
Well, I'm sorry to see Gary leave. He's heard me say this several times. When I interviewed Gary a few years ago and looked into his eyes and said, "Are you ready to assume this position?", he enthusiastically said, "Yes." He said all of the right things that I think we really need in a Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. He did it with great distinction, and you're an exemplar for what needs to be done in that important role. I wish you only good things, Gary. Your reasons for leaving are profound and personal, and I will leave that for you to talk about at your convenience. But I just want to thank you again for the very, very fine work that you did, and I'm deeply appreciative of that and your friendship as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman Schmidt, Chancellor Goldstein, and distinguished Board members, the President and the Chancellery. I am indeed very, very pleased to have had the experience that I've had here at CUNY. Today is a day of mixed feelings for me. It's a little sad, but yet it is exciting that I have a lot to take with me. The past three years working at CUNY with some of the best and brightest students, staff, faculty, and administrators has made my tenure the most rewarding experience of my career. I feel truly blessed to be part of a great professional family like CUNY. I've often commented to Chancellor Goldstein that the one mistake he made is that he didn't find me earlier because I would love to have worked for him 10 years ago. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity, Chancellor, and Board members, to work here at CUNY. As a Student Affairs developmentalist, I have had the privilege to work with world-class Vice Presidents for Student Affairs. My hat is off to them. I've had the privilege of working with world-class Student Affairs professional staff members. My hat is off to them. I thank the Presidents, the Deans, and the faculty, and of course, our support staff for all the great work you do to make our students successful here at CUNY. I do believe that we are serving a world-class student body and that students who graduate from CUNY will go out into the world better equipped than they've ever could imagine. Thank you so much.
I would like to thank Trustee Frida Foster Tolbert for agreeing to serve on the search committee for a Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, which is being chaired by President Marcia Keys as designated by the Chancellor. I'd like now to call on Trustee Valerie Beal to introduce a special resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution of appreciation Dean Sanford A. Roman, Jr. Whereas, Dr. Sanford A. Roman has served as Dean of the Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education at the City College since 1990, and whereas, Dr. Roman has also served as interim president at the City College from 1999 to 2001, and whereas, Dr. Roman has overseen the successful development of distinctive and highly regarded BS, MD, and PA physician assistant programs at Sophie Davis, working with a distinguished faculty to offer students a rigorous education that prepares them to be both healthcare practitioners and leaders in their communities, and whereas, Sophie Davis has earned accolades and respect from the medical education community for providing a challenging curriculum in a supportive environment utilizing a cohort setting that encouraged student success, and whereas, Dr. Roman's prominent career has spanned three decades in medical education and in the development and management of healthcare services, particular in the urban setting, and whereas, prior to joining the university, Dr. Roman served as Senior Vice President for Medical and Professional Affairs for the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation, and has served in faculty and administrative positions at several schools and universities, and whereas, Dr. Roman has produced many scholarly publications and has served on several national and state task force and commissions on education, medical education, and health service issues, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Stanford A. Roman, Jr. for his exemplary dedication and distinguished service to the City University of New York.
I'd like to second the motion. All in favor, please signal by applause. I know I speak for all my fellow trustees when we express our condolences to Trustee Valerie Lancaster Beal on the passing of her mother, Jessie Manning Lancaster, on July 14th. We would all also like to express our deepest condolences to Hunter College President Jennifer Rapp, whose mother passed away on September 13th. I note also with sadness the passing of several distinguished members of our CUNY family. The prominent Baruch College alumnus and extraordinary benefactor, George Weissman. Another very prominent generous alumnus of City College, the testing preparation pioneer, Stanley Kaplan. The world-class writer and Brooklyn College alumnus, Frank McCourt. Former Brooklyn College President, John W. Kneller, who served with great distinction during a difficult time, and the very recent passing, just last Sunday, of former Baruch College Provost, David Dannenbrink, all provided exemplary service and dedication, and on behalf of all my fellow trustees, we extend our deepest sympathy to their families. Now, I'd like to call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooklyn College and Graduate Center Professor of History, Robert David K.C. Johnson, has received the fifth annual Philip Merrill Award for Outstanding Contributions to Liberal Arts Education from the American Council of Trustees and Alumni. He follows in the footsteps of other world-class faculty like Donald Kagan and Gertrude Himmelfarb. Congratulations. The Medgar Everst College School of Business was recently awarded its Petition of Charter for the Delta Mu Delta International Honor Society, and Medgar Everst College Professor of Biology and Dean of the School of Science, Dr. Wu Sen Pat Wahi. Health and Technology was selected for a Fulbright Specialist Project in Uganda, Gurul University, and will present lectures in molecular biology and biotechnology. Congratulations. Kingsborough Community College Professor of French, Franz Antoine Leconte, was made Knight by Decree in the Order of Academic Palms. The order was originally created by Napoleon in 1808 to honor eminent members of the University of Paris. Kingsborough Associate Professor Jonathan Deutsch at the Center for Economic and Workforce Development was elected to the Board of the National Council for Workforce Education, NCWE. Congratulations. U.S. News and World Report's America's Best Colleges has ranked Hunter College number one in the nation among master universities whose students graduate with the lowest debt burden, fourth for diversity in the master's category, and 10th for top public universities north. Congratulations. Baruch College received an award from Minority Acts X, Inc. at its 10th National Role Model Conference in Washington, D.C. For the second year in a row, Baruch College was listed among the top 10 percent of colleges in the United States by Princeton Review. Also, Baruch College's undergraduate program in entrepreneurship was ranked number nine in the nation in the survey conducted by Entrepreneur Magazine and the Princeton Review. Congratulations. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. I'd like now to call on Trustee Kathleen Facilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooklyn College alumna and staff member Helen Phillips has received a 2009 Rona Jaffe Foundation Writers Award, given annually to six women writers who demonstrate excellence in early in their careers. Congratulations. Hunter College entering freshman Ayesha Delatu has won a President's Award for Education Excellence from the U.S. Department of Education for meeting challenging standards of excellence. Also, Hunter's Model UN team has won awards in the top three honor categories at the National Model UN Conference, winning one of the top five awards from among 300 competing colleges. Congratulations. The Baruch College Student Chapter of the National Black Accountants won first place at this year's KPMG National Student Case Study Competition, besting nine others' competing teams nationwide. Also, Baruch graduate students have won Silver and Bronze Awards and an honorable mention in the 2009 Collegiate Echo Competition sponsored by Direct Marketing Educational Foundation. Congratulations. Two Queens College Science students have received prestigious internships. Neuroscience major Adish Bhajnath was one of 17 students selected to receive a summer Rockefeller Fellowship, and neuropsychology student Kathleen Vandick was one of two students chosen for the Public Interest Policy Internship Program of the American Psychological Association to work in Washington. Congratulations, all. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university since the June 22nd, 2009 meeting is available in your calendar books. In connection with the gifts and grants, I would like to announce that I did a little research this summer, which concluded that the increase in private giving to CUNY during the Chancellorship of Matthew Goldstein is the highest increase in private gifts of any university, public or private, in the United States. Well over, well over 10 times. May I call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me echo what you said about President Karen Gould, President William Pollard, and President Felix Matos Rodriguez, and interim President President William Pollard, and President Felix Matos Rodriguez, and interim President Stan Altman. These are four very, very able and important new additions to the leadership of the university, and we're delighted that we were able to make that happen. I also would like to point out in the audience, Dr. John Clark, who was the former interim chancellor at SUNY, who is now Acting University Executive Director of Business and Industry Relations, working on CUNY business and industry partnerships and entrepreneurship. John, you want to stand up? Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about the wonderful work of our presidents in securing private money for the university. Obviously, we want to continue that record pace, but I also would like to mention that if we did some research, we would find that we are at the top of the class as well in the hiring of new faculty. I have just been presented with data that I asked for this afternoon, and in the fall of 2000, Mr. Chairman, we had about 5,500 full-time faculty at the university. We project this spring that we will be close to 7,100 full-time faculty. That is an increase of over 1,500 faculty since we started down this road in 2000, and that's something all of us, the board and the entire university, should be deeply proud of. There is nothing like hiring able and promising scholar-teachers to really mold and inform our wonderful students here at the university, and we will continue to do the best that we can to make this a welcoming place for the best people that we can recruit and maintain. I finished about a month's work of one-on-one meetings, intense meetings, with all of our presidents and deans of our professional schools this summer. This is part of the summer ritual where I allocate approximately the middle part of July to the middle part of August, and I'd like the board to know that in the 10 years that we've been doing this, not 10 years, seven years that we've been doing this, this has been the most rewarding of those experiences for me. The presidents are really doing a very fine job, really focusing on core values, focusing on goals and objectives that we have established jointly with the campuses, paying attention to the metrics that we use and seeing that those goals are obtained. And on behalf of the board, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board, I really would like to say thank you to all of these very inspiring women and men who are just doing a great job for this university. We are experiencing a record-breaking student enrollment experience here at the university. We are now serving approximately 260,000 degree-seeking students at the university. This is a 6% increase approximately over the fall of 2008, and the highest level this university has experienced since 1974. The increase in overall enrollment is greatest at our community colleges, exceeding 8%. Overall, our FTE enrollment has also exceeded 8%, outpacing headcount enrollment, which is a good indicator because it shows that students are enrolling for more credits on average than they were before. In addition, we are serving an equivalent number of non-degree students, students that we classify as continuing education students. This is really quite good news, but I just want to send up a cautionary balloon. This kind of enrollment growth is not sustainable. It is not sustainable because of our physical limitations on our campuses and the inability to provide, I would say, very, very strenuously, the kind of academic experience that we have all worked so hard to do, in terms of rigor, in terms of currency in our curriculum, in terms of the women and men, the professionals who we hire as instructors and professors and academic support personnel. What we need to be mindful of is a moral dilemma that we have. We have a very weakened economy where many people are coming to the university to shore up their skills, to present themselves into the marketplace as professionals who have acquired new talents and then find the kind of job that they want. And that's a good thing, and that's something that we need to constantly do at this university, and in particular, a public university. But we cannot lose sight of the fact that there are limitations to what we can do in terms of full-time faculty and in terms of academic support services, class size, and the physical constraints of having enough classrooms during the day and well into the evening in which we are doing now. We must have a very serious conversation among ourselves, starting with the chancellery and the board and the presidents, and working through the community to ensure that we have this proper balance between inviting students to study but not losing the kind of values that we hold dear at this university to provide the best kind of academic experience. So more on that, but we will be paying deep attention to our enrollment patterns, and I've asked Executive Vice Chancellor Lexa Logue to lead a university-wide effort to start considering options that we have to create that appropriate balance, and we will be reporting back to this body after we've had time to deliberate with the various constituencies that will be part of this serious discussion. I am delighted to inform you, and this was covered well in the press, that our mayor has made a $50 million pledge in support for a whole set of actions around community colleges and indeed the development of a new community college. I will tell you in no uncertain terms that this is the first time a mayor of the city of New York has really paid attention, as this mayor has done, in terms of talking about the importance of community college and community colleges. It was a couple of years ago that President Gail Mello informed me, and it was a statistic that I honestly did not know, when she said to me that 45% of the students that study as undergraduates in colleges and universities in the United States study at a community college. And I must say, Gail, that was a wake-up call for me, and we got out shortly thereafter and started talking about the importance of community colleges. This is an asset class that I believe is going to become more and more important over time and have greater market share in terms of the experiences that we have of universities overall. Clearly, we need to think about community colleges to provide more seats and to do even a better job than we do here at this university, and we're committed to do that. And that's why I asked for a planning effort to be made, to come forward with a plan for a new community college, and I'd like to just bring you up to date on where that planning effort is at this particular point in time. Let me start with a piece of good news about fundraising for this particular project. You may recall that in March, we announced that the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation awarded the university $560,000 as a planning grant for a new community college. That grant came with a requirement that we raise about $280,000 in matching funds. I'm delighted to report that two weeks ago, the Carnegie Corporation of New York awarded the university $300,000 as a match against the Bill and Melinda Gates' award to the university. We also received a $35,000 award from the Macy Foundation for planning related to addressing the need for community colleges to serve as pipelines for minority and low-income students into higher reaches of the health professions, including medicine. On the programmatic front, the project is in a very important stage. In August, a university-wide invitation to participate in committees building the college was distributed. Over 300 faculty and staff across the university responded, and we now have faculty and staff involved in creating the college's innovation in first-year programming, developing its library and technology plan, and imagining how its facilities can best reflect the educational and graduation goals of the college. Additional committees on other aspects of the college will be formed soon after the new year. It is a very exciting time at CUNY and for the nation's community colleges. President Obama's American Graduation Initiative sets the bar very high for us for improving the nation's community colleges, and resources from the president's initiative, we hope, will provide critical support for the new community colleges, new community college, as well as for CUNY's existing community colleges. Mr. Chairman and the board, I want to thank in particular Senior University Dean John Mogalescu, who I asked to lead that effort, and the projects director Tracy Mead for their ongoing efforts on this important project, and obviously, Mr. Chairman, we will keep you very informed of the progress of this important effort. Let me move to the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. CUNY's efforts to secure funding under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act have to date resulted in slightly under $36 million, and the full listing is in front of you if you care to peruse that material. Of this, a little over $18 million is being managed by the Research Foundation, and I thank you, Richard Rothbard, for keeping eye on that money. These funds were largely generated by successful applications submitted for competitive review of federal agencies, including the NIH and the National Science Foundation. CUNY is a sub-recipient of the remaining $17 million in awards received to date. In addition, New York State allocated about $18 million in fiscal stabilization funds, and we anticipate that over time, CUNY will continue to get greater market share of those dollars. On the financial aid front, I'm pleased to report again that the federal stimulus increased the maximum Pell Grant from about $4,700 per year to a little over $5,300 a year. That is welcome news for so many of our Pell recipients here at the university, and we're delighted about that. On July 27th, the New York State Board of Regents elected Dr. David Steiner as the New York State Education Commissioner and President of the University of the State of New York, succeeding Richard Mills. I know David quite well. We've worked together over the years. He worked with great distinction with President Rapp in his capacity as dean of the School of Education at Hunter, and I think David Steiner is going to do a splendid job. Just last week, I met with our, I'm sorry, Chancellor Nancy Zimfer regarding the Race to the Top money, with also Chancellor Merrill Tisch, David Steiner, and Regent Lester Young. I'd just like to tell all of you just a little about this important effort that Secretary Arne Duncan has developed. This is a $4.35 billion pot of money that was developed through the stimulus program to address a series of major issues, and this was the reason for the meeting with Chancellor Tisch and Chancellor Zimfer and David Steiner and Regent Young. We were asked to think about issues about adopting new state standards and assessments to prepare students for success in college and the workplace. We were asked about recruiting, developing, rewarding, and retaining effective teachers and principals. We were asked about building data systems that measure student success and inform teachers and principals how they can improve their practices. And we were asked about turning around lowest-performing schools. Each of these are formidable in their own task, and CUNY, I am very, very pleased to report, has been on the forefront of many of these issues over a sustained period of time. I think the state commissioner, the chancellor, will be looking at CUNY for guidance, and we are in the process of helping to shape some of those important issues as we submit our plan to the federal government. Let me talk briefly about the state budget. All of you know from the press that we are facing in this fiscal year about a $3 billion deficiency, a gap between commitments and expenditures and anticipation of revenue to cover those expenditures. We have, we are in the process of responding to a call letter from the DOB, the Division of Budget, about how we will structure our budget request, and we are working through that process with the presidents, and it's my intention to bring to this board, Mr. Chairman, in November, a budget recommendation that we will discuss with the board and submit it for consideration by, to the governor. Let me put up yet another cautionary balloon. I believe, notwithstanding the $3 billion real problem, and I believe that number is going to grow before it is, it is covered, that the bigger problem that we face, not the next fiscal year, but the fiscal year after and so forth, probably two or three fiscal years out, this university, this state, is in for a very, very rocky journey. We see what is happening in Florida. We see what is happening in California. We see what is happening in Arizona and across the United States. The states collectively are in serious trouble with respect to managing their resources, and New York State is no different, and it obviously will affect this university over the next few years. In anticipation of this, several months ago, eight, nine, 10 months ago, I told this board that we were forming three working committees. One chaired by Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malavie on our operating budget, one chaired by Vice Chancellor Weinshahl on our physical assets, and one chaired by Vice Chancellor Rick Schaefer on the articles that govern this university, and to really look very deeply in all of those areas to see the kind of maneuverability we would have at various levels. those areas to see the kind of maneuverability we would have at various levels of budget trauma. And they have worked very effectively, very quietly, discussing with various constituencies ideas and ways in which we might navigate. But I think the issues are becoming much more profound now as we really see the full impact of what we are facing in the state, and I've asked for a much further drilling down by those three working groups, and Ernesto Malave has started that process. It'll be followed with Iris Weinshol. We need to prepare ourselves so that the actions that we take, if we have to take those actions, and I would love to be proven wrong here. I would love to, you know, come back to you in a year and say that the actions of planning that we have taken really can be placed on the shelf and not put into action, but I don't believe that that's going to be the case. We need to be prepared. We need to do this smartly. We need to preserve this university in a way that will enable us to give the opportunities for all of these students that are coming through our doors every day to improve their lives, and we're just committed to continuing to do that. Obviously, I will keep this board appraised how we are, we are, we are doing. Let me just finish with a couple of, just quick announcements. There will be a, there was a New York City Council Higher Education Committee hearing last week on Friday, September 25th regarding our textbook initiative. This board, as you remember, supported a recommendation that I had given you to set aside $10 million in an in-house financial aid program for our students. I asked Vice Chancellor Malave to design, with the help of many people, an initiative, and he did so. Part of that design was for a textbook initiative. I want to thank librarian, our university librarian Curtis Kendrick for participating in that important and successful hearing, Associate Vice Chancellor Brian Cohen, Baruch College Chief Librarian Arthur Downing, and BMCC Chairperson Sidney Ang for their testimony on this important panel. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave on the excellent Financial Management Conference. He and his office organized this. Theme was "Looking Ahead: CUNY 2025." I was pleased to participate briefly in that conference, but I have heard from so many constituencies across the university how impressed they were with the manner in which this conference was put together and how much was learned. So Ernesto and Alan Dobrin, by the way, Alan is the one overseeing those three working groups, and I want to thank you both for, for doing this with such style and professionalism. The university was honored for its commitment to diversity earlier this month in Washington, D.C. by Minority Access, Inc., a nonprofit organization that supports the recruitment, retention, and enhancement of a diverse workforce at institutions of higher education, government agencies, and corporations. CUNY's contribution to diversity in an education workplace was featured this past Sunday in the Week of Review section, Weekend Review section of the New York Times, and I want to particularly single out Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters for the very good work that she did in spearheading this for us, and thank you, Ginger. Also, I'd like to congratulate President Marcia Keys on receiving the Education Award last week at the Congressional Black Caucus Annual Legislative Conference in Washington, D.C. Marcia, a singular honor, and congratulations. I'm pleased to report that QUANT Network, and I may be one of the very few people that's really very interested in this, but this was a program that I started right before I left Baruch many years ago, starting a Master's of Science in Financial Engineering, and people looked at me like I was from out of space, but Baruch College's program was ranked within the top 10 of the programs, beating out Columbia, Berkeley, Stanford University, and two other very, very important institutions. These students are going on to do great work, and it's a very important program, and I couldn't be more pleased. So Stan Altman, congratulate you and all of the wonderful faculty that put that program together and where it is today. November is CUNY Month. It's only a month away, and this year's theme will be the CUNY Success Express. You know who came up with that phrase. It's gentleman to, too down from me. Over 500 events are planned on CUNY campuses to showcase college activities. It is the most extensive outreach of any university in New York City, and Jay, thank you for all of the wonderful work that you do. For those of you who picked up the, the New York Times this past Sunday, and you opened up the magazine section, and you saw that extraordinary meeting of the minds, colon, creative energies, creating knowledge, also the brainchild of Jay Hertzenson, so Jay, again, thank you and your staff for doing that important work. You also have in your place the CUNY calendar events for September through December. Take time to look at it. It's clearly quite, quite impressive. Thank you, President Jeremy Travis, for taking care of our bug bed problem. Jerry, Jeremy called me at 1:00 in the morning, and he said, "We got a bug, a bed bug problem." And I said, "Wait, let me just slap my face a little to wake up and hear this again," but Jeremy, you did it with great, so if we have another problem, I know who to call on. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, before I just ask Alan Dobrin to say just a little bit about swine flu, which I think is important that we report on. I just want to indicate that the report in the, in the New York Post regarding some deficiencies that were reported by the state comptroller regarding our following of the Federal Clearey Act, we, we took that draft report quite seriously. As a result, we have designated a chief compliance officer to provide guidance and assistance to colleges on preparing their annual security report. The university will engage an outside consultant to advise the university in developing a plan. We will establish a panel consisting of university attorneys to help colleges through the gray area of conflicts between local laws and those required under the Clearey Act, and a bunch of other provisions that we have put in place, and we imagine that this will deal with the problem most successfully. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I've asked Alan Dobrin just to brief the board on what we have been doing around swine flu, and so Alan, it's yours.
Thank you. Let me quickly just talk about the city's status in terms of swine flu and what the university is doing. The Department of Health and Mental Health recently did a survey to try to determine how many cases of swine flu there were in New York City last year, and they surveyed emergency rooms and health clinics, and they found that between 750 and 1 million New Yorkers afflicted with swine flu last year, which will please people here, there are almost no cases, almost no case of people over 65 having swine flu, and most of the cases are people below the age of 17. Right now, the H1N1 flu is a very mild form of the flu. Fortunately, we always have the ability to look a little bit ahead because the Southern Hemisphere is ahead of us in terms of seasons, and in the Southern Hemisphere, it looks again like it's still going to continue to be a mild form of the flu. We'll continue to work very closely with the city's Department of Health. The city's Department of Health plans to have 1.2 million doses of flu delivered in the middle of October, with 500,000 doses being seen by them every month after. The doses of the H1N1 vaccine are going to be distributed through DOH clinics, the Health and Hospital Corporation, and private physicians. The Board of Ed will be doing inoculations of their elementary school students during the day in the schools. The vaccinations are recommended for people between the age of six months and 24 years of age, or people with underlying medical conditions. CUNY is planning to do a number of things as our partners effort. First, we're going to be doing and are doing regular email blasts to the CUNY community, which include updates on Health Department guidelines, where to get H1N1 inoculations, and tips on prevention. We're also doing information posters on campuses to teach people safe practices, including covering up their coughs and washing their hands for 20 seconds. We have a hot button on CUNY's webpage that will provide our latest tips on H1N1 and the latest links to the CDC and the Health Department. We've disseminated our pandemic plan, and we're monitoring trends on the flu to make sure it does not migrate into something different with the Department of Health, and when flu season begins, we'll be having electronic meetings every single day. In your package, we've included our pandemic plan, the mayor's press release on H1N1, and a PowerPoint presentation on all of CUNY efforts, which are some additional things beyond what I've described. And I just want to thank Dr. Howard Appson, who's really done all the heavy lifting here. Thank you, Alan.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Let's take first questions and comments from the trustees on Executive Vice Chancellor Dobrin's report. Are there any comments or questions? All right then, take comments and questions to the chancellor on his report.
I would like to reiterate what the chancellor said about the jeopardy facing this university. I am pretty familiar with, with what's going on at the University of California and the University of Michigan, and those institutions, particularly California, are being rocked to its foundations by, for example, a 20% cut. That's a big cut. What can we expect here? Well, the politics of the situation might suggest that after the governor and legislature have been elected, the hammer is likely to come down very, very quickly in a new administration, and I think the financial outlook of New York State won't be quite as bad as California, but California is a complete and unmitigated disaster and doesn't know at this point what to do. So I agree with you that, that the $3 billion deficit that we're currently looking at could be two or three times worse than that in two years. So the, it, it is extremely important for the university community to do what is incredibly difficult for academic communities generally, which is to take a, a realistic and pessimistic view of what might happen. Hopefully, it won't, but we can't plan on what to do about a 20% cut in two months. So we need to get way out ahead of this, of this, of this situation and, and look at the difficult choices that we're going to, we very likely are going to be faced with over the next, over the next two years. If it hadn't been for the federal stimulus, this thing would be much worse, and that's just not likely to be a recurring savior, just not enough money to be printed. I mean, so, so I think we could be looking at difficulties of a sign we haven't seen since the 70s. Dr. Morales?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I am very concerned about the enrollment situation in our university. There is a great enthusiasm of minorities coming into the CUNY, and I would hate to see that it was very difficult for them because of the physical problems that we have to come into the university. I think that it must be done not to curtail the enthusiasm and to prevent them forgetting an education. This is a very serious situation because the minority community really needs to be educated, and we are the responsible, we're responsible to give them that education. I also want to congratulate President Jeremy Travis. He brought the President of the Dominican Republic into John Jay, and they had a wonderful conference about police, assault, and all kinds of programs that are devised between the Dominican Republic and John Jay, and I think it was a very enlightening program that the community enjoyed very much, and I really want to applaud Jeremy to do this kind of a program.
Thank you, Dr. Morales. Any other comments or, by the trustees, or questions?
All right. We'll, we'll turn now to the policy items requiring a vote. First, I want to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for September 29th, 2009. You have copies of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the chancellor on the report? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, those carries. Secondly, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of June 22nd, 2009. You'll find a copy of the minutes at Section 2 of your board book. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or revisions to the minutes? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to the reports of our committees. I'd like to call first on the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on September 9th, 2009, and approved numerous resolutions. They are as follows. I will present Items 3A and 3B together. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution calling for the trustees to authorize the Office of General Counsel of the City University to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase maintenance services. Such purchase shall not exceed an estimated cost of $3,150,000 for the initial first-year term, and the contract shall include up to four one-year options to renew. Calendar Item 3B is a resolution calling for the trustees to authorize the Office of General Counsel of the City University to execute a contract, again, on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase janitorial services. The contract is to be awarded to the New York State Industry of the Disabled without a competitive bid and pursuant to law and university regulations. New York State Industries of the Disabled is a listed preferred source. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2,230,000 during the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2010. Such contract shall include up to four one-year options to renew. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Items 3A and 3B.
May I have a second? Any questions for the committee on 3A and B? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, those carry.
Calendar Item 3C is a resolution authorizing the General Counsel to execute a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the university and State University of New York, NYLink. The MOU memorandum of understanding shall be awarded as an intergovernmental agreement pursuant to university regulations and applicable to, and applicable law for a term of one year. The total amount of the services shall not exceed $1,850,000 for this term. This MOU formalizes and extends the City University's ongoing relationship with NYLink to receive critical services for 20 CUNY college libraries as well as the central office. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3C.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. Calendar Item 3D is a resolution authorizing the Board of Trustees to approve the City University Identity Theft Prevention Program. This new program provides for policies and procedures to help reduce the risk of theft, risk of theft of identities of students and other members of the university community. The program is based on the Federal Trade Commission's regulation known as Red Flags Rule. The rule requires certain creditors to develop and implement an identity theft prevention program for accounts that are designed to permit multiple payments or transactions. Among the university accounts covered by the rule are Perkins loan accounts, tuition payment plan accounts, and accounts established for the repayment of loans to students. The program was developed by a task force representing departments within the university that are responsible for opening and/or maintaining these covered accounts. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3D.
I'll second that one. Are there any questions about the identity theft, uh, program? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, the committee received the following resolution, a copy of which is available on the table for the trustees. It's, and it's within your board book. It's a new, uh, resolution. Uh, it was given subsequent to our meeting on September 9th, and I'd like to present it to the board at this time for, uh, its approval and adoption. A resolution that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorized colleges to purchase workstation, service, networking equipment, related peripheral devices, software, maintenance, and professional services under any of the existing department, agency, or instrumentality of the United States government contracts, or any agency, office, political subdivision, or instrumentality, or of any state or state contracts pursuant to the terms and conditions of those contracts to law and, uh, to university regulations. Such annual purchases shall not exceed a total of $30 million, chargeable to the New York State Capitol or operating budgets, or the New York City Capitol or operating budgets for the appropriate fiscal year. This item is being presented to the board at this time to avoid undue delay.
Thank you. May I have a second for Item E?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the committee?
One question I have for, for, to the staff, since I represent the committee. Over what period of time is this $30 million planned to be spent?
It's, it's 30 per annum.
Per annum, so it just goes forward. I have no further questions.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Following the approval of action items, uh, by the committee, Vice Chancellor Malave then proceeded to give his report, uh, on the 2010 state and city budgets. He also announced that fiscal year 2010 allocations have been issued to the senior and community colleges. Vice President Malave reported that the New York State Budget Division is projecting a deficit for the state at that time of $2.1 billion for the current year and $4.6 billion in the following fiscal year. This development may result in mid-year reductions to the university's budget, as the chancellor has mentioned. Vice Chancellor Malave reported that steps are already being taken to minimize the impact on core college academic and student support functions should mid-year cuts need to be enacted. Um, Vice, the Vice Chancellor also cautioned that we must be prepared and plan for significant challenges in fiscal year 2011 and fiscal year 2012. Vice Chancellor Malave advised the committee that the university's FY 2011 operating budget will be presented to the Committee on Fiscal Affairs at its next scheduled meeting on November 2nd, uh, for its consideration. In addition, Mr. Chairman, Janet Krone, our Chief Investment Officer, gave a report to the committee on the progress made in implementing the, the university's asset allocation policy, uh, which was approved last December. The timing of these changes, as reported by Ms. Krone, proved to be fortunate and, and included added value to our investment pool. For calendar year-to-date, the total pool return was 15.6%, uh, performing the standard of Core's 500 Index by some 370 basis points. All asset classes and investment managers had positive returns. Further, the pool's fiscal year 2009 return is in the top quartile of the Cambridge Endowment Universe, which consists of clients of Cambridge Associates, who is City University's investment management consultant. Also of significance is that the 2009 return is 200 basis points above or greater than the average return for all U.S. college endowments. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on that investment performances. There are a lot of universities that are not congratulating themselves about that at the moment. Does that conclude your report?
That does conclude my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We'll hear next from the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At its meeting on September 9th, 2009, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered the following matter. Calendar Item 4A, which I will now present to the board for its approval. Amendments to Governance Plan of Kingsborough Community College. The proposed amendments to the College Council Constitution, which serves as the governance plan of Kingsborough Community College, are the result of a lengthy assessment process initiated after a middle states review of the college in 2006. Prior amendments resulting from that same review were adopted by the board in February 2009. The changes are designed to revise the goals and functions of standing committees to make them more effective. In addition, the election procedure for delegates at large will be revised to allow for fewer than 18 candidates, in the event that fewer than 18 are interested in running for office. These amendments were adopted by the Kingsborough College Council on June 2nd, 2009, and are recommended by the college president. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends their approval. Mr. Chair, I present Item 4A for the board's consideration.
Uh, thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee on the governance plan? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention? That carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and, and Management. Trustee Mark Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered 13 items at its meeting of September 9th, 2009. These action items are listed in the board calendar's calendar items 5A through 5M. I'll go through them all and ask every couple what vote at the end of the presentation. Item 5A, City College of New York North Campus High-Temperature Hot Water Distribution System. A resolution to approve a design-build contract with Genesis Engineering PC on behalf of the City College of New York for design and construction services, as required to repair or replace the distribution system on the college's north campus, and to authorize the City University Construction Fund to authorize the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York to authorize Genesis Engineering to complete the contract documents, bid and award contracts, and supervise the construction project. Item 5B, City University of New York CUNY Real Estate Development Corporation. A resolution to authorize the incorporation of a New York not-for-profit corporation qualified to issue bonds on behalf of CUNY in order to finance the acquisition and development of property located in the city for a leased CUNY or CUNY affiliate to be used to operate the CUNY Law School program. Item 5C, Hostess Community College New Sound Studio. A resolution to authorize CUNY to execute a construction contract not to exceed $1,050,000 on behalf of Hostess Community College to create a new sound studio in the 450 Grand Concourse Building. Item 5D, Hostess Community College Renovations at 500 Grand Concourse. Resolution to authorize CUNY to accept a design by Go-Show Architects, LOP, on behalf of Hostess for renovations at the 500 Grand Concourse Building to include the fifth-floor roof and restrooms. Item 5E, Hunter College Campus School New Public Address and Clock Systems. A resolution to authorize CUNY to execute a construction contract on behalf of the Hunter College Campus School to build a new code-compliant, school-wide, integrated public address and clock system. Item 6F, Hunter College Experimental Psychology Lab Renovation. A resolution to authorize CUNY to execute a construction contract on behalf of Hunter for renovation of the experimental psychology lab. Item 5G, Hunter College Thomas Hunter Hall Restoration. A resolution to authorize CUNY to approve the design by Superstructures Engineer and Architects on behalf of Hunter for the restoration of Thomas Hunter Hall. Item 5H, John Jay College of Criminal Justice. A resolution to authorize an amendment to a prior resolution to reflect an increase in project scope and cost from $1.8 million to $3.5 million to include the resurfacing of the running track and tennis courts as part of the roof replacement. Item 5I, Lehman College Student Life Building Renovation. A resolution to authorize CUNY to authorize the City University Construction Fund to execute a construction contract on behalf of Lehman College for renovations to the student life building. Item 5J, Magdor Evers College. An amendment to a prior resolution for a library expansion. This resolution is to authorize an amendment to a prior resolution to reflect an increase in the project scope and cost from $360,000 to $1.58 million to support the renovation of additional space in the library, including an additional 2,200 per square feet for a new cyber café. Item 5K, York College, a science building upgrades for the new nursing home program. A resolution to authorize the execution of a construction manager-build-a-contract on behalf of York College for upgrades in the science building to accommodate the college's new four-year nursing degree program. Item 5L, City University of New York, the sale of residence at 169 East 79th Street. This is a resolution to authorize DASNY to proceed with the sale of the residence at 169 East 79th Street. The property's been used for many years as a residence for university chancellors and college presidents. It was put up for sale several months ago, and we have recently reached an agreement with a buyer for a price of $3.4 million. Item 5M, City University of New York Graduate School and University Center Residence Hall. This is a resolution seeking authorization to proceed with the project to establish a residence facility in East Harlem for graduate school faculty and students. This resolution will authorize the establishment of an entity empowered to develop, own, lease, and operate a residence facility in East Harlem primarily for students and faculty of the graduate school and university center next to the nursing school. Mr. Chairman, I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Uh, thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions on any of these items? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Um, I cannot let the moment go by without commenting that at least two of these items are likely to have historic consequences for the entities that they involve. First is the movement of the law school to Long Island City. And the other is the creation of a good residence opportunity for graduate students and faculty for the graduate school. This is gonna have a, both of these items are gonna have a huge positive, uh, impact on CUNY. So, uh, to all those who've planned them for years, uh, well done, and, and your persistence has paid off. I would like to present a non-action, uh, two non-action items, uh, simply as a report to the board. You'll find on pages 25 and 26 of your board book, calendar item number 6, which is for informational purposes only, to give you a notice of two actions taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on August 18th, 2009, of, uh, two items pertaining to Baruch College recommended, uh, by the chancellor. The executive committee unanimously determined that it would be bad for the university to delay the decision of these matters, and unanimously adopted the chancellor's recommendation. Uh, our executive committee rules require that we report to the board on any, on any items, uh, that we act on, uh, over the course of the summer. That concludes our, uh, this portion of our business for this public meeting. We need now to go into executive session, uh, briefly, and then we will return, uh, to the public meeting for two action items. Meeting is adjourned.